All right, good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started here momentarily. If you can ensure your cellphones are off or on silent, and council members ensure your microphones are turned on. Today's Monday, November 3rd, 2025. It's Committee of the Whole Meeting for Barburton City Council. Before we begin our Committee of the Whole Meeting, we do have individual committee meetings this evening. So we will kick that off with Street Sidewalk and Lighting with Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call the Street Sidewalk and Lighting Committee to order. It is Monday, October 20th. No, it's not. I'm sorry, it is Monday, November 3rd, 2025. It is 6:01 PM. We're in council chambers. Everybody on the Street Sidewalk and Lighting Committee is present, including all of council and members noted on my sheet. Today, we have one piece of requested legislation, a letter from Stacy Carr, Planning Director, requesting legislation to delegate all roads not previously delegated in New Haven West, New Haven East, Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4. Emergency wording and one reading requested. There's a letter along with it and several maps. I'm sure you all had a chance to see it. Are there any remarks about this piece of legislation? I know, yay! New Haven's gonna be very, very happy about this. So, with nothing else to say about this, may I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. One second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? We don't have any pending legislation. Miscellaneous, I heard today that Stratford started. That's also Halaluria. And then I have something that came through our emails, I think it was earlier today. Sort of has to do with streets. The Metro, Metro RTA is since November 1st. If you show your Hi-O Direction SNAP or EBT card, you can ride the Metro for free. The card member, the card holder has to be present, but all the members in that house hold can ride the Metro at no charge. You have to show your card, of course. So it started November 1st until further notice. And I thought it was kinda neat. You can go on to yourmetrobus.org/snap and you can see the routes that are near the next. So, getting a little bit ahead of that. I think there are a couple of different departments worked on that together. So I was really happy to see that today. But if you have any questions, you can call 330-762-0341. I do have one question for Todd today. The signs from the repavement programs, some of them are still up. When are those coming down? Like paid for by tax dollars at work, those guys?
They will, I mean, it's obviously over now. I think all of the rest preparations have done, whether they may be a little bit here or there. But no, we'll have the guys start taking them down.
Thank you. Okay. So that's all I have for miscellaneous. Does anybody else have anything?
Same, while I'm talking. So, Mrs. kinda Utilities, kinda Screets, but so I met with our Utilities Distribution Collection Manager this morning. And I asked him, Mike Jackson, I said, where we have the cut? So they are in the teens. I said, well, so if I go to council tonight, I tell them by tomorrow, they'll be in the single digits. I said, are you gonna make a liar out of me? And Mike Jackson said, no. So we should be, our cutout repairs should be in the single digits tomorrow. Chuck, the one up there that you had brought up on a couple of different occasions, they said that that actually was on the list from 2024. They didn't have a real good excuse why, when they did the one around the corner, they didn't do that one, other than they just assumed the guys thought that it was probably, you know, the gas company or another cutout. They didn't recall, they probably weren't on that job. But if it hasn't been done, it'll be done real soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Todd, I sent several emails, but one resident pointed out there's no speed limit signs on the street.
So I actually asked George this morning, and he said that there is supposed to be. So I asked him, but I mean, when will they be installed? I don't know if they've been ordered, if they're waiting on them. I do know that on the north side of the road, if you look every now and then, there's a core drill hole in the concrete, like there's supposed to be a sign there, and there isn't. So I'm assuming those are for the speed limit signs. So hopefully, those will be installed here soon. That project is still ongoing. You know, we have a punch list. They're still going to be repaired as we're talking.
So you have your emails with residents and your requests.
Yep.
Thank you.
There is some speed limit signs. Yes. I did, I saw at least two.
Okay. Well, I've driven it twice, and I have, I have obviously not seen them. I drove, because I thought the same thing that Rebecca had said. And I didn't see them.
If I recall correctly, there's one, it was road west at the Wolf Creek Bridge, which is kinda like the ending of it. But if you're coming eastbound, it's right there. I mean, unless you're paying attention here, you're gonna see it. I mean, that's kinda difficult. But there are speed limit signs. But I do recall seeing some old road that, you know, who knows what they're for. They could be for no parking.
I'm hoping that there's more speed limit signs. It'd be nice to get a few more. But I had, I did also notice that there was some crews there. So they are monitoring, you know, the activity on the road. I'm sure that new people will follow that.
And then, since Mr. Shreve is still standing, have the guys started leaf pickup? Because I'm starting to get calls already, and I know the schedule's supposed to start here.
I have a manager meeting tomorrow that I will ask my street guys. I don't recall what my schedule was.
Right. Name was Ward Ford first.
Ward Ford was first. I think that ended on Halloween.
So I feel like last week was the first week, so they should be making their way through.
Okay. Because I'm already getting phone calls about the leaves and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I would have them, you know, reference the schedule on the website. I mean, they typically try to follow that pretty close. If they get done in the area that they're working in, they'll move to the next one on the schedule, and then they should start, when that time hits, they should start back in the beginning of that section. But I will, I'll double check it.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
In relation to that, 37th Street, they tend to have a lot of leaves in the road, and that is sort of a main road for that neighborhood over there. So if you could just mention it to them, if they have time to just do a quick drive down 37th Street. Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mr. Shreve.
Mr. Shreve, I've seen you're gonna do Fairview, so we have a great citizen, I guess, who's been hard with Pucco, who's got Fairview, the road tracks fixed. Did you hear anything about the one on Fifth? Did you send out their emails? Do we have any correspondence as far as that sidewalk, that ending, and things of that nature, this street downtown?
So I did, so they, I did, I, what's that?
They had asphalt sidewalk.
So they extended it through the railroad tracks?
On the, only on the east side of the road.
Yeah. I just, yeah, because that thing just abruptly stopped and dropped.
Yeah, so I actually spoke with Mr. Chanklin. He's the, I believe, General Manager for Wheeling ABC. And he said that they did, and he sent me a picture where they connected the sidewalk through. It is asphalt.
That's okay.
But, but yeah.
They can walk ahead.
Yep, allows people to.
No, that's awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else? Go right ahead.
Just real quick, sorry. Dallas Moore, 5243 Decker Street, East New Haven. This is a good night. I just wanted to thank the Streets Committee for approving the passing of the East New Haven Streets and Council for officially incorporating them into the city next week at the meeting. Over the past year, we've faced significant challenges getting the developer to fulfill their obligations and complete the necessary work to fully finish this development. As recently as January, six years into this project, we still did not have streetlights despite paying taxes on them and not being able to enjoy all of the benefits of living within city limits. I urge City Council to seriously consider the issues citizens encountered over the last six years and personally over the last 11 months to put in place stronger legal safeguards to prevent similar problems from future projects. Handshake deals are not sufficient to ensure reliability for new homeowners. Many of us assumed the five-year tax abatement was a motivating factor for completing the development, but the reality came with only partial benefits. And now for a good portion of tax payments up. We simply wanted to be homeowners in the city, expecting basic services such as streetlights, working sewer drains, snow plowing, and street sweeping. We did not anticipate having to facilitate an 11-month back-and-forth, essentially reminding and begging working adults to do the jobs. With the streets now officially passed, it'll be the first winter that both developments will be safe for our citizens and especially our children during the winter months, who no longer must ride a bus sliding on icy roads. Street sweeping and debris removal will resume, and residents will feel more integrated into the city by having basic commodities promised six years ago. I'd like to thank every single one of you for the multiple emails and reaching out, coming up and visiting, offering to come up and visit to get this done. Also, Mayor Judge, Councilman Griffin, Director Shreve and Carr for getting this finished, and also Director Miller for her guidance as well. So, on behalf of New Haven, East New Haven, HOA, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Okay. We are adjourned at 6:12.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck. Next up is Environmental Health and Social Services, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you, President. Environmental Health and Social Services is meeting in council chambers this Monday, November 3rd, 2025, at 6:12 PM. All members of my committee, including myself as chair, Senator Griffin as co-chair, Taylor Thompson, and Justin Greer are present as well as all other council members and guests as noted on my sheet. We have no request for legislation at this time, no pending legislation. I was made aware that we might have some people wishing to speak about the situation on Northman Road. So if there's anybody in that that has requested to speak at this time, you're more than welcome to. Not, we will move on. Okay. Do I have any miscellaneous discussion from my committee or the body? From the gallery? Hearing none, you have a motion to adjourn.
One second.
One second.
One second.
And we are adjourned at 6:13.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Next up is Planning and Actioning Codes, Mr. Haddock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning and Actioning Codes, it's Monday, November 3rd, 2025, 6:13 PM in council chambers. The committee is present, which consists of Councilors Thompson, Harris, President Greer, myself as chair. All others are noted. We do have one request tonight. It is a request from myself to create a moratorium on data centers within the city of Barburton. Emergency wording and one reading requested. Are there any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
One second.
You, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. So, with that being done, we have nothing pending. Didn't receive an email from Director Carr. She was not able to make it tonight. But she provided a few updates. They've identified 97 vacant lots, not that we don't know, but certified back taxes and drafted a letter outlining to the Summit County Land Bank Sideloct Program. And that's available to all the council rewards for the larges to get to the neighbors to see if they can sell them there or want to buy them. She, in that email specifically addressed me and said, "Mr. Hage, we glad to know that I have the final draft of the development code." I will share internally for review, but if anyone's interested in looking at it, she's happy to share. And lastly, we have a guest tonight. Assistant Director Corey Hunt. Welcome aboard.
It's a pleasure. I want to be part of your lovely city.
Thank you.
Awesome.
You have, Assistant Director, do you have anything you want to say?
Um, the walls of my office are empty, so if anyone has any historical photographs that they'd like them, I'd be appreciated. Definitely this time, thank you.
Thank you. With that, is there any miscellaneous discussion? Body? From the gallery? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:15.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. And at least Finance and Personnel, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring the Finance and Personnel Committee to order. It is Monday, November 3rd, 2025, 6:15 PM here in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, which includes myself as chair, Mr. Hage, Mr. Griffin, and Mr. Greer, as well as all other council members and guests as noted on my sheet. We have a few requests for legislation this evening. The first thing from Jamie Iceman, Director of Public Safety and Human Resources, requesting legislation to approve the renewal contract with Met Mutual Life for group life insurance from January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026. Emergency wording, one reading requested. The current contract expires December 31st. So that is attached. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
Motion.
You, one second.
One second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Next, another request from Jamie Iceman, Director of Public Safety and Human Resources, requesting legislation to approve the renewal contract with MetLife for employee vision coverage from January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2027. Emergency wording, one reading requested. Same thing as the previous one. The current contract expires December 31st of this year. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
One second.
You, one second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
We'll go ahead and open this up for miscellaneous discussion from my committee or the body. Anything from the gallery, Mr. Flackton?
No.
All right. Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
We are adjourned at 6:17.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. That concludes our individual committee meetings. With no objection, I'd like to roll right into the Committee of the Whole Meeting. Okay. Today's Monday, November 3rd, 2025. This is Committee of the Whole Meeting for Barburton City Council. I call this meeting to order at 6:17 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I did not check, but citizens addressing council, is there anybody in the audience, citizens, that would like to address council? If you'd like to, if you can just step up here, state your name, reason for speaking, and we'll give you five minutes. Just know that council will not respond back to you at this point.
Good evening. My name is Julie Bedikoffer, and I live on South Van Buren. I'm here because of my neighbor Nathaniel Parsons, who caused a social media sensation last week after video of him crashing into the neighbor's fence was posted to the Barburton Neighbors Group on Facebook. I was at work this afternoon when I learned that a judge has finally put him in jail and suspended his license. One of my coworkers told me, "I don't think I've ever seen you this happy." And I think that says a lot about what Nathaniel has put our neighborhood through. I want to thank everyone in the community for their outpouring of support. Many of you donated your time and talents to make sure we stayed safe this weekend. In particular, I want to thank the Fred Hampton Gun Club and the Barburton Police Department. On Facebook, Nathaniel's youngest brother Seth begged for understanding. He argues that he and his mother are also Nathaniel's victims. I'm inclined to believe him. I say this because amongst all the other shouting and noise I've heard coming from the Parsons property over the years, every now and then, I hear one boy screaming, pushed to his breaking point. "Just leave me alone." So I encourage all of my neighbors to give the rest of these boys one last chance to show their true colors. Remain vigilant, keep your cameras up, report everything. But if these boys decide that they don't want to follow the path that Nathaniel is taking, let's give them the opportunity to become meaningful members of our community. The nuisance named Nathaniel has been put on hold, at least for today. But the nuisance of the Parsons property remains. The yard is ruined. It turns into a mud pit when it rains. There are several broken-down vehicles and junk scattered everywhere. I'm calling on City Council to take charge of the situation. I'm not asking for more fines. Help these people make it right. I want to see this neighborhood flourish in Nathaniel's absence. I think you'll be surprised at how little it takes to make that happen. A lot less than we've already spent to keep police there all weekend. And I hope we can welcome Seth and Mrs. Parsons back as our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other? All righty. We'll move into our committee reports, and we'll start with Street Sidewalk and Lighting with Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, Street Sidewalk and Lighting met here in council chambers. We have one letter from Stacy Carr dedicating to the rest of the streets in New Haven and New Haven East, Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4. And we pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck. Environmental Health and Social Services, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Environmental Health and Social Services has nothing to report, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Planning and Actioning Codes, Mr. Haddock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning and Actioning Codes is calling for a moratorium on data centers within Barburton. Emergency wording, one reading requested. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. City Properties Park to Make Greats, Mr. Eastman.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met October 27th here in council chambers. We had two requests for legislation. Both were letters from our Planning Director Stacy Carr, requesting permission to sell city-owned properties. One was a buildable lot for a dollar, and non-buildable lots for 15 cents. We had some criticism. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman. Public Welfare and Safety, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Welfare and Safety met on October 27th here in council chambers. We had no request for pending legislation. We did speak about the area of Van Buren and First Street regarding speeding. An email was sent to Lieutenant White, and he was going to increase troubles in that area. The speed trailer is out of commission for the year. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Rules Marketing Development, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules Marketing and Development Committee has nothing to report this evening. With that, I pass. We didn't move forward with that.
Okay. I was looking at it, like, trying to recall what it was. All right. Thank you, Ms. Gerhart. City Utilities, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Utilities have nothing to report. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. And Finance and Personnel, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, Finance and Personnel met here in council chambers at 6:15. We are calling for legislation requested from Jamie Iceman, our Director of Public Safety and Human Resources, to renew the contracts with Met Mutual Life for life insurance from January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026, as well as for MetLife for employee vision coverage from January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026. Emergency wording, one reading requested for both. Current contracts expire December 31st. And we adjourned at 6:17. If nothing else, I will pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. That concludes our committee reports. I just have one thing. Tomorrow is voting, so just be sure to direct any resident that reaches out for voting locations rules to the Summit County Board of Elections. And I would also like to wish all the candidates best of luck tomorrow. Is there anything from the body? Mr. Haddock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Beck, I apologize, it didn't hit me until you were already out of the committee. Director, street lights on Second Street. Do we know when they're getting turned on?
I will follow up with my street guys and find out where they're at.
What I mean, the street lights are on, but I'm talking about the...
Yeah, I don't have any. I'll follow up and find out.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Gerhart.
I wanted to follow up from last Monday night because I felt like the conversation about the Parkinson Rec ad didn't have much traction. What continues to concern me is that there's been no acknowledgement of wrongdoing, no apology, and aside from the new public communication content policy, no explanation of how this was handled eternally. There's been no indication that anyone has taken responsibility or that steps have been taken personally to make it right. This situation costs our residents financially and in trust. And when public funds are spent to investigate an issue, our community deserves honesty and transparency in return. Mistakes happen, but integrity requires owning them. Mayor, in your response email to council on October 20th, you said that you take issue and refute some of the statements in this report. Can you clarify which statements you believe are inaccurate?
Yeah, you know, I've never given approval for a Parkinson Rec ad. So I was not asked to give approval for this ad. So when it says that I gave approval for this ad, it's not asked, we never had a formal meeting about it. So I definitely refute that. You know, mistakes were made. There's enough blame to go around. I'm the mayor, I'll take the blame. Nothing was done maliciously. Nothing was done to try to win something over or out of line. Mistakes were made. Like I said, enough blame to go around. I'll take the blame, though, I'm the mayor. And we have met internally, and there are things that are being put into place, like the living policy, that will stop this from happening again. There's directives that were put in very, very early on from the law director and finance director that remain today. More oversight, and so that's going to continue.
I appreciate you saying that because we didn't get to hear that last week.
Well, you know, there's a lot of inaccurate information, a lot of things that, you know, we go strictly by the report, which, again, there's some inaccuracies, you know, in my opinion. But this is something that, you know, there's, again, enough blame to go around. You can blame whoever you want. I'll take the blame. I've heard all kinds of comments, and that's why I say what I'm saying about inaccurate information. Blame who you want. Except for a lot of things. I don't get on Facebook and search for information or search for who's commenting here or there. This is information or comments that I'm getting face-to-face from residents. So, good, bad, and everything in between.
Yeah.[1784.12] Yeah, and it's been a variety put out there, but I know you mentioned you didn't approve the ad, but in stating like a reminder for making sure there's a disclaimer. Like, how was that communicated and like, could that reasonably have been interpreted as approval?
I can't speak for how someone interprets what I say. The disclaimer is election law, but it also would indicate that we, the city, did not pay for it. I did not see the ad until it was mailed to my house.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhart. Are there any other? What? Here, he went, Mr. Harris.
Alright. Mayor. According to the report, there's some admissions from an employee that you appoint regarding work hours using city computers, maybe to answer an email concerning this ad. And then the employee handbook, which I have part of it right here. Six point eight, six point zero eight, computer internet electronic mail acceptable use. And then six point zero eight subsection C, unacceptable activities. Performing work unrelated to their employment with the city, use of the internet, electronic mail is intended for the transmission of business-related transactions. And then four, on number four, it says soliciting others for commercial ventures, religious or political causes, or other non-job-related solicitations. According to the investigation, there's some admissions that you knew that this ad was happening because you were asked about it. Is that true?
I'd have to read that report. See, there's so much that they, there's so much that goes on on a day-to-day basis. And to come back a few months later and say, hey, you definitively know on this date or at this time period this or that happened. So, no, I can't say that, we've never sat down and had this formal conversation about an ad, or even the Parks fall preview or whatever it's called, flyer. If someone said something about an ad in the flyer, I don't recall a conversation of having that. The email went out first in March, not in July, but March to everybody in the city, saying fall preview's coming up, first getting ads, things like that. So there's one in March and then one in July.
Being that you appointed your secretary, has there been any disciplinary action taken?
We don't discuss disciplinary action publicly. I'm going to be meeting with the H. R. Director, shoring some things up, and it will be then. Like I mentioned last week.
There's been, it's been, what, two weeks or so since we had this report? And you're just now, I mean, we learned from the last time that this, something like this happened with the H. R. making recommendations for two appointing people, appointed people. And the recommendations were made, I mean, that's the H. R. job, H. R. Director's job is to make recommendations. You're the appointing authority, and you should be disciplining that. Has there been any discipline issue for your appointed secretary?
No, like I just said, I'm going to be meeting with the H. R. Director here in a little bit.
Can you let council know what the results of that would be? Whether we can do it in an email or executive session?
We'll talk to the H. R.
I think it's, I think the people deserve that, you know. There's obviously violations with, you know, not only the criminal law, but also within the employee handbook, that everybody, all employees should abide by. There's obvious violations by at least one, one person. And I think there should be discipline handed down. Also, Mrs. Miller, can we please refer this to the Attorney General's office?
I can send the, I can send the report to the Attorney.
It's a criminal investigation, and I think the Attorney General should look at this. I understand from what you said before that, you know, you're kind of conflicted with representing both sides here, in a sense.
Oh, no, I am conflicted. I have a, I have a full conflict.
So I formally ask you to refer this to the Attorney General's office, please. Thank you.
As mentioned last week, by a council member, or several of them, probably everyone that in a work environment, whether for the city or someone else, private sector or the city of Barburton, wherever, has probably unfortunately and by mistake at times possibly, sent an email on their work email. It happens from time to time. There's no malicious activity, there's no malicious intent, and now we brought up that word intent. It was brought up last week as well. So, you know, these are the things that we're going to discuss, and I mentioned that last week. We've been inundated with public records requests, some from council members, where we have to drop everything, but then handle those things. But then we have other things going on. So, you know, we get a response or an email from a resident, we drop everything, and we reach out to the post office. We reach out to the contractor, the inspector. And so we do our due diligence on all these things. So, dropping everything we're doing to address a problem means that all the other problems kind of have to wait, right? And so if there's a resident who needs help, we drop everything and help the resident. That kind of takes quite a piece of minds. As I said, I'm going to meet with the H. R. Director, and I will get back.
Mrs. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like I said at council, Mr. Mayor, last week, the thing that really bothers me is we sat through executive sessions with you in it, trying to figure out what we were going to do, and it could have been handled right there with silence, so that we had to, well, we didn't have to, but Mrs. Miller asked for the appropriation that we give her to, and we thought it was the best thing to do. But we probably didn't have to do that had we spoke up and said, hey, you know, here's the situation, this is what happened. And that's the part that bothers me. I, to be honest, I care less about the ad. It's the whole, let's stay quiet, maybe I won't get caught mentality is how I feel. And I'm just going to ask, since you could have avoided the cost, are you willing to pay it back?
So you're making some insinuations here that I don't agree with.
That's fine.
I mean, so I'm not going to answer that question right now, but I'll get back to you.
Absolutely. I mean, that's how I feel, and I want you to know how I feel. And I want the rest of the council to know how I feel. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Reese. Mr. Haddick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been here going on six years. In that six years, Mayor, have I ever asked you anything if something would pass a legal litmus test in six years? Have I ever asked you that?
I don't know.
No, I haven't. Because you're not a lawyer. You're the executive of the city. Director Miller, I've asked you many times if something could pass a legal litmus test, have I not? Okay. When we talk about how this all could be avoided and who could have stopped this, I said it last week, a Parks Department went to the executive office and asked someone who's not a lawyer. They could have asked me, and what happens is when a department asks another department for basically the legal litmus test, instead of legal, it opens us up for this kind of bullshit, and that's what's happening here. That department failed by not going to legal. That department failed by going to somebody who's not a lawyer and who is the executive branch. When the mayor said in that report, that he said that disclaimer has to be on there, he's correct. He's ran enough campaigns to know an ad should have that. But he never said that to the ad because the question wasn't can this ad be in there? He's not a damn lawyer. He's not in charge of legal. You ask somebody, hell, if I ask Councilor Beck for a legal litmus test for something and I'm wrong, or she gives me the wrong advice, do I get to pin it on her? And say, well, she told me? No, that's my failure for not going to an elected legal director and her entire staff. That is a fault of the Parks Department one hundred percent. How the hell do you have a question on something that's ethical or legal and not go to a legal department? We have a whole department for that. It could have stopped right there. The Parks Department did this. The Parks Department wasted that money. And if anybody wants a pound of flesh, every commissioner should be removed from that committee. And then, on top of that, Council Reese, you asked if something should be paid back. It should be paid out of their budget next year. Their professional services should be docked, their travel should be docked, all to make up that cost. Because an entire department cost us this money. They cost the taxpayers this money. Not the mayor, he's not the lawyer here. Not Director Miller, she is the lawyer here. She was never asked. Not Director Flanker, the finance director, he was never asked. We want a pound of flesh and we want the money paid back, then punish where it goes, with the whole Parks Department. There's a charter amendment that could take care of it, or we could take care of it by the end of the year. It's up to us. We appropriate the money. We want to see the money paid back, professional services, gone. Travel, gone. Consequences should happen, and a department should pay it. Thank you.
So anybody else? Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one other thing, Mrs. Miller. I know you said there was another investigation I'd asked of that also be sent to the police on top of this. Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, there's nothing else. We'll do the mayor's report.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. President. On a lighter note here, Change for Change will be held November fourteenth in the Green Diamond, benefiting again Reynolds Classic Stroke Awareness. As you see in the news, federal government has shut down, staff benefits suspended. And I put this in an email to council. I've been working with the State of Ohio, County of Summit, local businesses and nonprofits to help those who lost their staff benefits. As I put in my email, I believe I put in, you know, I know I put in the letter to all the organizations that I reached out to. We may be able to help with our HUD rep, or HUD money, but our HUD rep is furloughed, so we can't touch the money. So that'd be the only money we have to really work in that area. Just under five thousand Barburton residents receive SNAP benefits, these are children, adults, and elderly throughout the community. We're working with three of the largest food pantries in town, some monetary funds or non-perishables can be sent directly to BACOM, the Barburton Salvation Army, and ORCOM and threads. Again, I've reached out to local businesses and donors to help fund this as well. The county put up two hundred fifty thousand dollars adding to their contract to the AgriCamp Regional Food Bank. They ask for donations as well. Our local food banks get food from AgriCamp Regional Food Bank, but they also get it from other areas as well. And with that, we're starting our collection of non-perishable toiletries for those three organizations a month early. So starting now, and will run for the next three months, November, December, January. Last week, I had the honor of attending the open house of Barburton High School surrounding the Four City Compact with advanced manufacturing and cybersecurity. These programs offer more than just an education. They're providing real-world skills that can lead to a career right after high school. I know there's businesses in town looking for people with these skills. I do applaud all the schools involved with the Four City Compact. Again, having a lot of success, and a lot of this reason they're expanding and kind of growing is a grant that came through. If you went to Barburton, you may have known Mr. Phil Odomozzi. He authored some of the grant, and the award came through, but he unfortunately passed away. So they've got some great machines in there, and I know there's some businesses in town that wish they had that technical training. The Summit County's Middle Mile Fiber Expansion, that's starting in town with some pot bowling or daylighting. So when they said pot bowling, I got nervous. So that's the excavation process, digging test holes, looking for underground lines that may not show up through hoops or G.I.S. or a map. So they're starting that now. We have a weekly meeting with the county and everyone else that's in the process. Just last week, they ran twelve thousand feet of conduit, and since they started up in northern Harley County, over three hundred fifty-four thousand feet of conduit have been laid. Talk about the incident in south, south end of town. There's no room for hatred, or racism, or total disrespect. It's the total disrespect and lack of respect for each other. No room for that in our community. We're a community that rises and falls together. So we need to continue to stand together, support one another, and it's really up to all of us to make the community a better place where everyone feels safe and secure and welcome. If you remember a few months ago, Mr. Jim Culver came in, talked about the Tuskegee Airmen, took a picture up here. So we planted a tree at Lake Gannett today. There'll be a more formal dedication in the spring, but we want to get something in the ground now, so we did that today. And so it'll be back, not sure when, just kind of spur of the moment, but I'll get you guys an invite for whoever that is. Don't know how the spring's going to be, but I'll let you know. And then just lastly, want to congratulate our own Denny Weaver, fifty years of work working for the city of Barburton. He's one of the publically acknowledged, and thank him for his knowledge, his insight, and continued oversight of the utilities. He's not only a true asset, but a integral part to our operations here. So I want to congratulate him on fifty years of service to the city. With that, any questions?
The tree that was dedicated, it was for the Tuskegee Airmen? What kind of tree was it?
Red maple.
Where was that tree planted at?
Over by the cannon. There were two trees that fell down near the walkway to the north of the cannon, just north of it. That we had cleaned up this past year, so it's in between those two.
To, thank you, Mayor. To your point about the CDBG budget, I was told through the planning department, the problem isn't that the HUD rep has been furloughed. The biggest problem is when we pass the action plan and get it to HUD, they have to sign off that everything looks good. When they got in their hands, the money has been wired to us, but now that's in HUD's hands, they can't, there's nobody there to physically sign the paper. So we can't spend one cent of it. The money that we could try to unlock to try to help people, the federal government, there's nobody there to just let us do it. So by having not only our forced residents sidelined with no staff benefits, they've also cut our knees off even being able to help them with the money that's meant to help low to moderate income people. So if anybody asks why we can't use the CDBG, it's, they won't, there's nobody there to sign it, so we can't.
Yeah, we have the money, we don't have a signed agreement. I had, Mrs. Carr, Mrs. Carr reached out to our HUD rep when this started unfolding with the government shutdown. Generated, self-generated email came flying back saying, hey, I can't even log into my, you know, so can't even communicate with it.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. With nothing else, this meeting is adjourned at six forty-six P. M.